All right, good evening. Before I bring the regular evening meeting to order, I just would like to say that we're very sorry that we heard about the tragic accident on Friday evening that took the lives of ten junior Broncos hockey players and five team personnel. We're very deeply saddened. This is a tragedy that not only affects that team and that town, but affects the entire country. And our prayers are with the parents, family, friends, and entire Humboldt community. So at this point, I'd like those who are able to to please stand, and we'll have a moment of silence for those. So now I would like to bring the regular evening meeting of Towne, Chippewa, Langley Council to order. And the first item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. I've had one request for change, and that is to change delicate D1 in exchange for D3 in that order, so D3 would go first, and D1 would go in D3's place. So with that change, I'd ask for a motion. Counselor Qualley, second by Counselor Whitmarsh, and all those in favor, opposed, and carried. Next item is the adoption of the minutes, the regular evening council meeting of March 19th, 2018. Could I have a motion, please? Counselor Davis, second by Counselor Arnison, any errors or omissions? I see none. All those in favor, opposed and carried. And a motion to adopt the public hearing meeting minutes from March 19th.
Salute.
Counselor Long, second by Counselor Davis, any errors or omissions? All those in favor, opposed and carried. We will now move on to presentations, and we do have a presentation here today. It's great to see the Langley Christian Lightning Senior Boys Volleyball Team here with us tonight. And they won the 2017-2018 B.C. School Sports Double-A Volleyball Championships at the Langley Event Center late last year. This is a tremendous accomplishment for these outstanding young volleyball players. A lot of hard work and dedication was shown by the team members and their coaches, and the result was being named the best in B.C. You set an exemplary example for all athletes of all ages in our community, and we should be very proud. So I'm going to come around, I'll say your name, and I'm going to give you a certificate. And when we're done, you just kind of crowd together, and we'll get a nice picture. But I do want to congratulate you on your achievements. I know it takes a lot of hard work. Thank you. Rowdy Hopper? Congratulations. Thank you. And Peyton Grim? Mike Pussohop? The second team All-Star, Caleb Cassidy? And Coach Carol Hopper? And Coach Brendan McCash? Do you guys kind of crunch in? I don't know, some of you feel like you can heel down and stuff. I would heel down, I'll never get up again. Always make me feel so short.
You.
Yeah, they're tall, tall young men. Okay, so without, we now move on to delegations. And so the first delegation is going to be Phil Henderson. And just before the delegation comes forward, we do have a long agenda, and the time limit is five minutes, so the lights will flash and blink and then turn red, so like five minutes will be up, and then council may have some questions. And just provide your name for the clerk, so they get it recorded, and your address. Thank you.
Yeah, okay, Fort Langley.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Froze and councils, councilors. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Phil Henderson, I live in Fort Langley. I'm an environmental consultant and a registered professional biologist. I study plants, animals, and ecology in urban, rural, and wilderness areas throughout B.C. in Alberta. My goal here tonight is to explain the role of trees in the ecology and biodiversity of urban landscapes or rural landscapes. I'll try to keep this presentation short and sweet, hopefully sweet enough to convince every one of the importance of retaining trees and the wisdom of the Tree Protection Bylaw. You might wonder why it's important to protect and conserve trees and other natural features such as wetlands in an urban or rural landscape when they are present all around us, all in natural areas outside of the municipalities. Well, over 50% of the Earth's human population now live in cities. Much urban growth is within highly productive areas, areas of high biodiversity, rare plants, and animals. So the retention of natural features such as trees in urban areas has become an important and crucial aspect of conservation. Trees are critical components of ecology and biodiversity in urban and rural landscapes. Trees create habitat for birds, they provide nesting, roosting, foraging, and sheltering opportunities for mammals, they provide nests such as northern flying squirrels, cavities in larger trees, resting areas for raccoons, and roosting areas for bats, insects, habitat for insects in the barks, rotting wood, and in the mosses of the door and the trees. Also plants on the trees themselves, so ferns and other mosses and liverworts. The tree itself is the ecosystem, particularly the large old trees, which are valuable and irreplaceable. They influence the area around them and create habitat for other organisms on the ground. Important characteristics that influence trees' contribution to ecology and biodiversity include whether or not they are native or non-native. Native trees contribute significantly more than non-native trees to the biodiversity of native organisms. Whether they are young and small or old and large, the old and large trees are very important, essential parts of our ecosystem. And evergreen and deciduous, do they retain their leaves all year round or drop them in the fall? It's also important to consider how and where trees grow. They grow in isolation or in groups such as the forest. And there are lots of forest fragments around Langley and different private properties, parks. A key consideration of these forests is the size of the forest. Big forests are best, the shape of the forest, square and circular forests are the best as well, and the configuration of the forest, whether or not they're close to one another. And this affects the ability of organisms to move between them. So large old trees. Recent scientific studies have determined that large old trees are of critical value in urban areas as keystone structures. And by keystone, I mean they provide crucial habitat and resources for wildlife. And large old trees provide structural complexity not offered by the smaller, younger trees, and younger trees take a long time to develop the features of the old trees. They can provide profound impacts, perhaps profound impacts, on local microclimatic conditions, soil moisture, and soil nutrient levels. They are nodes of regeneration, they act as source populations for seedlings of their own kind, and for other organisms such as insects and mosses that grow there. So if we lose the source, that is, these old trees, and we lose, we lose those species from the urban landscape, and severely reducing native species biodiversity, and you can't really, it's hard to get them back. Large trees increase habitat connectivity, which may help species range expansions and their capacity to adapt to climate change. Researchers now consider it urgent that the value of large trees for biodiversity is recognized in urban management and planning policies, that tree protection bylaws recognize that large trees are critical for biodiversity. And I'll just sum up by saying that Tree Protection Bylaw will help to protect ecology and biodiversity in Langley. It'll help to educate people and create a great appreciation for our natural environment. So, thank you. If you have any questions? Okay, thank you.
Mic on, sorry. Our next delegation is Kathryn Gray.
Hello, I'm Kathryn Gray. Thank you, Your Worship, and good evening, members of council. As I said, my name is Kathryn Gray, and I'm pleased to be here to speak to you and ask you to support a proposed motion for an interim Tree Protection Bylaw. While I was initially trained as a landscape architect, I've been an ISA-certified arborist for 23 years and qualified as a tree risk assessor for 11. I've been a resident of rural Langley for five years, and I've enjoyed getting back to my country roots. However, I am very concerned about the number of trees which are being removed from development sites or are being cleared from a variety of sites across the township prior to the start of development permit application processes. Tree conservation and urban forestry management are critical components of ameliorating the effects of climate change in our communities. The federal and provincial governments are taking a variety of steps to mitigate future impacts. Within the B.C. Climate Action Toolkit, a number of urban forest practices are outlined as key strategies in managing climate change, especially in urban areas. We know that trees absorb water, slow surface water flows, provide windbreaks, and provide shade, helping to decrease temperatures and heat islands. Trees also store and sequester carbon, and the larger the tree, the more carbon is stored. For example, a 75-centimeter trunk diameter tree will absorb 90 times what a small tree will. Trees reduce pollution, absorb airborne pollutants, and help purify water and allow it to filter back into our aquifers. As an arborist, I see daily the impacts of climate change, and in particular, our increased summer drought periods. Native tree species such as birch and western hemlock are declining at great rates, largely due to increased periods of summer drought. Western red cedars, in many areas, especially those that are open-grown or on forest edges, are exhibiting cumulative drought stress. I routinely see canopy densities in western red cedars down to about 40%. This is very worrisome. Mr. Henderson has spoken about the negative impacts to ecological systems from the removal of large trees and the removal or disruption of connected forest ecosystems. Percentage of canopy cover is one critical measurement of how we are doing overall. The best practices canopy cover number is 40%. The average North American city is about 27% canopy cover, and cities such as Vancouver are now less than 20% and scrambling to catch up in a critical period of change coupled with development pressures. Economists at TD Econ published a 2014 report that details the value of trees and therefore recognizes and quantifies trees as community assets. They figure that the metro tree canopy cover of about 43% has an annual benefit of $225 million. We don't know what the township canopy coverage is or what it is composed of in any detail. The last measurement of this was in 2003. A look at geosource maps online with the aerial photo overlay shows a steady decline in tree cover as areas are developed. Updating this information at some point might inform policy and urban forestry management decisions. In any case, we need to avoid a crisis point and work to adapt urban forestry management to allow future generations to flourish. Clearly, we have a complex task in front of us. We need to save farmland and support our farmers, and yet also accommodate development pressures. Langley faces the same issues as does Richmond, Delta, Surrey, and Abbotsford. These municipalities have tree protection bylaws and work to minimize losses of tree cover without limiting the functional requirements of landowners. An interim Tree Protection Bylaw here would allow us to slow the rate of tree removals and perhaps even reassess how we value trees and their contributions to our community. I'm now in my third decade of practice, and so I've been to many Arbor Days and Earth Days. The next one is April 22nd, and I see that the township will once again participate and encourage citizens, and in particular, children, to join in. These leaderships are very important, and I appreciate what council and staff do on these such days. I am here tonight, though, to ask you to do more. Please support the motion for the interim Tree Protection Bylaw. Thank you.
Thank you. I do have a question from a couple of councillors. Counselor Richter?
Yes, thank you very much. As an arborist, I have a question for you. Is there a lot of root rot in the trees in Brookswood? Because I get told that a lot by people wanting to develop, that they've had arborists come down there and check the trees, and the trees all have root rot.
Not to my knowledge. I mean, there are a number of fungal organisms that are always present in the soil. These do affect certain species, hemlock are primarily affected. I think that if that's showing up as an issue, it's perfectly valid to ask for more information. Maybe that's not happening in your review process?
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Arnison?
Yes, thank you very much for coming. I actually wondered if you had seen, there was a newspaper article today in the CBC having to do with their augmenting in Vancouver their tree canopy, because I thought it was interesting to look at the numbers that they have there. And they're making a very concerted effort, so I'm just going to read from the fact that it said in 1995, they had a 22% canopy, but that is steadily declining due to such things as cutting down mature trees, et cetera. And so they're trying to build that up now to 22%. So I'm assuming that that's one of the things that we could do, but first of all, it would be important to, from what you're saying, to kind of stabilize what we currently have, and then consider ways to bring those numbers up.
Yes, there are three main components to urban forestry management. One is conservation and protection of trees in good condition in locations that we can work around, and so that we're not restricting anyone's land use. The other component is maintenance, and the third component is tree planting. Tree planting is a vital part, but there's no quick exchange for a three-to-four-foot diameter Douglas fir. I mean, you can, you know, a developer will come and implant a little tree, that's not an exchange. So we really are, as Mr. Henderson indicated, we're having some big losses. And so to really restore ecosystems requires a kind of a much more proactive approach, I believe. Does that answer your question? Thank you.
Counselor Whitmarsh?
Yes, thank you for coming today.
You're welcome.
Did you say that the last time the tree canopy was measured in Langley was 2003?
Yes, I had some coverage maps from LEPs, which I also know were available through the township. I don't have any statistical breakdown from those or any analysis of those maps, but there was a breakdown of coverage of deciduous and coniferous and so on.
So you're not aware what the percentage would have been?
No, I'm not.
In 2003?
No, I'm not.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, there's no further questions.
Thank you.
Okay, and next delegation is Anna R.
I'm used to being on a Mac. How do I change this to slideshow format?
Go to from beginning.
Awesome, okay. Good. I want to use your arrows. I guess I'll do with just clicking. Okay, good evening, mayor and council, thanks for allowing me to speak this evening. I'm Anna R. from Murrayville. So we're in the process of planning neighborhoods and future communities on both hands of the township. We have Brookswood Fernridge with significant rezoning and density changes, as well as the Willoughby and Williams areas. And these areas have significant stands of trees. There is a concern about speculative lion clearing in Willoughby and the Williams neighborhood, and we only need to look at the benefits in Brookswood from the interim tree-cutting bylaw that was adapted in 2014. It almost immediately curbs speculative tree removal. And as a result, we still have significant stands of trees in this area that can be most effectively managed by applying the science we have available in 2018, not that from which is in 2000 or the 1990s. We have the opportunity to build an interconnectivity and current neighborhood and community plans that are being developed, not only in the Brookswood Fernridge area, but also in what is left in Willoughby and as we plan Williams. We need to take an inventory of our trees and acknowledge that our 100-foot trees and replacing with a 10-foot tree is simply not an adequate replacement. We need to monitor those tree replacements that developers are putting in. They need to be a beneficial variety of tree, not one that's the cheapest for them to put in, and it needs to be placed in such a way that it has maximum benefit as well as opportunity for survival. One of the issues with these new trees is that they're dying in the second or third year, which is after the first year of monitoring by the developer and by bylaws. So we need to give it three or more years of monitoring until the root structures will allow for survival through a summer drought. We should be collecting survival securities and replacement securities to ensure that the future of these trees and the cost of them does not fall back to the Langley Township taxpayer. We also need to ensure that we have sufficient consequences for those who choose to ask for forgiveness rather than permission in order to bypass our bylaws. The township has many identified environmentally sensitive areas, and the psychological and neurological benefits of naturally forested areas are multifaceted, and I don't have time to get into those in the five minutes you've given me. We're fortunate to have a network of aquifers for our potable water supply, of which 80% of the township's water comes from the groundwater. Our billion-dollar farm industry is reliant on groundwater via wells. It's concerning to see how much water levels have dropped in this chart, and this has been attributed to human consumption. The last reading there was in 2001, so, you know, who knows where that sits at right now? With increased population and density and human demand, as well as deforestation, the interconnectivity of trees, not only to wildlife habitat, but also to soil retention and water recharge for a township-wide network of aquifers, becomes that much more critical. You have wisely addressed some of this at the previous meeting with the new watering restrictions bylaw, but it won't be enough to offset the loss of permeable surface over the Brookswood aquifer and the surface throughout the Williams area. Add to that the impact of already-developed urban areas in the township randomly cutting down trees as well, then factoring the increased draw from additional population. Nothing lives without water, and you can't grow anything without water, and you won't have reliable water without trees. We need only to look at the drought-stricken areas due to deforestation around the world, and there's a lot of lessons that we can learn from Cape Town. There's modern science available, and we need to be proactive now. We can benefit from applying new science and knowledge gained by surrounding communities and take the best pieces of their bylaws enforcement protocols. Delta, Abbotsford, the Township of Langley, and Kelowna are all regulated communities, and Delta and Abbotsford do have bylaws for tree protection. We're fortunate to have these other communities that have gone before us. They have seen the value of those bylaws and are now moving forward with tree inventories and better planning strategies for their communities. As mayor and council, you play a key part in the way our communities are shaped and developed. Local government has a stewardship role to play under the community charter with respect to trees. You're also stewards of the many environmentally sensitive areas of groundwater, as well as the wildlife that relies on a viable habitat for survival. And I mention these jointly because, as previously pointed out, the size, species, age, and interconnected clustering of trees are all integral factors to a healthy and biodiverse ecosystem. You all have the power to do what needs to be done to ensure that our ecosystems thrive and remain biodiverse and intact, so that our water supply remains plentiful and untainted and is available at an affordable cost, not only for the residents of Langley, but also to ensure our food security by keeping Langley's billion-dollar farm industry viable. I prefer to shop local, I support our farmers, and I want to ensure they'll be here in years to come. The choices you make today will impact the quality of life, the standard of living, and sustainability of our communities 20 years from now and for future generations to come. It's in your power to ensure it is equal to or better than what we have now. Make this your legacy by making wise choices and forward-thinking. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and so next, oh, sorry, that was a little late. Okay, Counselor Richter has a question.
Yes, I noticed on one of your slides that three of the nine most vulnerable aquifers are in Langley Township, Brookswood, Hoppington, and Abbotsford-Soomas.
Yes.
In terms of vulnerability, how high on the list of nine are those three? Like, are they at the top of the list, or have they even made a list of that?
That actually came out of a township document, and I'm not aware of the actual prioritization of which one of those falls first, second, and third. But I think it's worthy of noting that that was something that came out a number of years ago, and I'm not sure that we've done anything significant to ensure that those numbers are going up. We've added density, we've added more people drawing from there, and I think that we really need to start paying attention to that, because we're now starting to go into, Brookswood there has, you know, that whole aquifer actually goes from Surrey through to Abbotsford and then back down into the States. The amount of farms that are dependent on that one aquifer alone are huge. The amount of money and the amount of food security that would be taken out of the township by losing the ability to farm on those pieces of property is actually, you know, I can't even begin to think of the damage that would make for us. And the standard of living that we've come to expect, where food is plentiful, I think that we're really having to look at what we're doing with our water. The water is the key to everything in the future, and if we're not going to have that to grow our food, we're not going to have that to drink, there's going to be a lot of issues that are going to happen as a result of that. And, you know, we're seeing it now, and the fact that you've taken measures recently, I see signage all around this building that says, "Conserve your water, don't drink too much, don't waste it, don't do this, don't do that, don't water now more than twice a week," which I'm in favor of, I never water my lawn. But I think that it's important to know that that conservation is not enough. If we continue to erode away all of the mechanisms that we have to recharge those aquifers, what kind of money are the taxpayers are going to be looking at to pay for the simple thing that we need to live? This is survival. This isn't a luxury. Water is a necessity. And how much are we going to have to pay for that in future because we're having to bring in GVWD water out of new sources, because there isn't enough right now in the reservoirs that we have throughout the lower mainland to make up for what we're losing as time goes on? And that ticket to put in a new reservoir and the cost to everybody for that is going to be insurmountable. We need to really open our eyes.
And my second question, have there been any studies done that show how much an aquifer drops with loss of canopy?
I haven't seen any myself. There might have been something in the Goldwater Report back in 2005. I'm actually drawing a lot off of memory of what I read back in 2014 when we were dealing with this whole Brookswood issue. So I haven't actually seen any new data that tells me anything descriptive about that. I'm sure that it's out there, and given the time, I could probably find it.
Thank you. Counselor Arnison?
Yes, thank you. Just a follow-up from Counselor Richter's questions, and thank you very much for your presentation. So I'm assuming that the issues really are interrelated, as you suggested, so the loss of the trees and the development at the same time. Because my understanding of trees is that they create a cycle in which the water gets absorbed into the ground, and the importance of the trees, rather than it just running off, is that they help it to go back into the aquifer.
And that's a really critical piece, that permeable soil and what's left of that, and what happens with the runoff, and we're calling it stormwater now? This isn't stormwater. This is water that we rely on to go back into our aquifers so that we can continue drinking it and showering it. And I think it's really important to see that it's not one piece. We're actually chipping away in so many different ways. We're drawing from it, we're stopping the recharge by building over top of it. We're not taking all of the measures that are currently available in science now with any of these new applications that are coming forward. We're not asking these people to do what
We're not asking these people to do what needs to be done to ensure that that aquifer is not going to be damaged. And to what cost? What cost is this sticking our head in the sand going to be? And for our farms, look at the amount of land within the township that the farms take up. They rely on us to make sure that we're not going to be drawing out of there based on population so they can continue to be viable. We're actually really in a partnership with these farms, and the farms are depending on us. So, it's counterproductive to bring in all this population and create an additional draw when in 2003 we had already identified that the reason these aquifers were going down was based on human consumption. That's a big piece. They didn't even begin to start looking at the detrimental effects of this massive amount of development that we're going to be seeing in these areas that, right until now, have had lots of tree coverage and have had that nice, slow, you know, sinking into the aquifer, lots of filtration through the roots and everything else, which ensures that the quality of that water is there. And it's twofold in that when we lose the quantity, we drastically lose the quality of that water as well. The amount of minerals and everything else that ends up being in there, the nitrates, all the toxins, it is condensed. So, even if you have water there, you may not be able to drink it anymore because you've taken the tipping point. You've gone past the point that that water's any potable anymore. So, having that water there and having it with all these toxins in it isn't going to do us any good either.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, next delegation is Geraldine Jordan. Do you need a hand with some of your... Okay, it's up there. I don't have it.
So, good evening, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Geraldine Jordan, and I am representing Friends of the Crosswalk, which was initiative to install a pedestrian crosswalk at 216th Street and 88B Avenue in North Langley. I would like to take the time to thank the mayor, council, and staff for all your hard work and planning and recently installing the crosswalk in this residential neighborhood on 216th Street. Overwhelming public support was demonstrated for this initiative through a community petition signed by over 150 individuals and five local businesses. I, along with my daughter Elizabeth, presented the petition and a written technical report to you in December 2012. Here are some of the petition's signatory comments, which we are showing you again in this thank-you copy of the petition. So, we have comments like, "Nearly hit twice at this intersection." This is before the crosswalk. "Very hard to drive out of the neighborhood." "Absolutely necessary. Ditto." Things like, "Keep people safe." "Dangerous to cross. A must for our children." "Safe community. Happy community." "Residential. More housing dictates crosswalks." And, "Yes, please. Think of the kids. Yes, please," and so on. So, there are 15 pages if you wanted to review them and see how grateful we are for that. So, as you know, pedestrians crossing 216th Street at 88B Avenue were in urgent need of a crosswalk, especially the schoolchildren who are most at risk. The important intersection provides pedestrians, especially children and teens, with access to three elementary schools and one secondary school. Moreover, the intersection provides pedestrians with westward access to the East Monday Creek Trail, which provides access to all Walnut Grove amenities, including the community center and the library. Many pedestrians of all ages are using the crosswalk. It has greatly increased the sense of connectivity and community in this residential area. As a side note, to improve safety of the crosswalk, we have provided feedback to staff to make some modifications. These include installing rapid-flashing beacons on the north side at the top of the crossbar because the north side beacons are currently obscured by some of the street trees. However, the additional battery backup, which was recently installed, is a great enhancement, so thank you for that, too. I wasn't sure if a formal thank you to the mayor and council was necessary, but then I considered all the effort in making this happen. Substantial effort has been contributed from staff, especially Mr. Paul Cudaro and Mr. Mike Stang, by mayor and council, and by all the residents. It seems, therefore, appropriate that we celebrate working together towards integrated communities. Let this be a model for moving towards increasing the livability, well-being, safety, and vitality of all our residential neighborhoods, not just in this instance, but throughout the township of Langley, by connecting us to the places we need to be in healthy, sustainable ways. On behalf of Friends of the Crosswalk, I'd like to thank you. And my daughter Elizabeth has a few words to add.
Thank you so much for the crosswalk. I use it a lot, and it really connects my community.
Thank you. Well, thank you very much. Thank you. Well, thank you very much for your presentation, and I really appreciate hearing that council works hard to make our communities livable. And there's a lot of little pieces that need to be done, and it doesn't all happen at once, and we appreciate you coming forward. Also, I wanted to ask you, there's a sidewalk. Was it on the east side? There was connection between the sides. Like, there's a piece that wasn't completed, and that's been completed now, too. So, that's made it a little bit safer, too, so... Thank you very much for coming, and Elizabeth, thank you very much for helping your mom. Okay. Now, I believe we're... I missed that. So, Mr... We have one more delegation? I don't have it in my...
It's Mr. Hugh Carter.
Mr. Hugh Carter. Mr. Hugh Carter.
Mayor and council, my name's Hugh Carter. I work for the Qualico Chowan Lee, who owns the Willoughby Town Center. I apologize, but I was told earlier today that my name was removed off the delegation for this evening's presentation. There was a vote this afternoon.
Okay, so I can... I wasn't here for that. I have to miss the afternoon meeting. But what happened was, because there are late delegations and there was a vote, yours was agreed to stay on because you were in time. I wasn't here for it, but I heard some of the... You were the fifth, so you were allowed. So, if you want to... You have five minutes. If you want to give us your five minutes. But I'm sorry if you got that information, that you were cut off, but you weren't.
Apologize. I don't have my presentation materials because I had misinformation from somebody who attended this afternoon's council meeting. As you know, I'm with the Willoughby Town Center, and we wanted to speak to you today because we are concerned about the Williams neighborhood plan that's going forward for first and second reading this evening. It's a process that's been going on since 2000, I think, early 2016. And however, the last preferred land-use plan that was presented to the public was November 2016, almost 17 months ago. So, we have been following up with staff on a regular basis to try and determine precisely what the land-use plan says because in 2016, there were 10 to 11 acres of commercial that were proposed in the neighborhood plan. That 10 acres was located at its closest point, only six blocks away from the Willoughby Town Center. The Willoughby Town Center is... Has been designated in the Willoughby Community Plan as the central commercial focus for the Willoughby neighborhood and the Yorkson neighborhood. And we, to date, have invested $168 million in the project. Our next phase is in for development permit. And so, we've lived according to the plan, and we've stepped up with our investment, and we continue to do so. Our concern is that the proposed commercial that's just six blocks away, we were told through staff, was going to be, in quote, "right-sized." We were shocked to learn last Friday that I think it would be more appropriate to term it "supersized." We've gone now from 10 acres to 19 acres of commercial, and our understanding is that it is to include a food store of approximately 43,000 square feet and a Canadian tire of 63,000 square feet. I'm going on memory. Plus, for a total with additional retail of 150,000 square feet of retail, six blocks away from the Willoughby Town Center. So, we're very concerned. Our tenants are very concerned. They're finally getting to a point now where the area started to develop, Yorkson, and they're getting on their feet. And now, the general consensus is that the rug's going to be pulled out from underneath us. I've spent 15 years of my life being a shopping center consultant across the country. I've worked on a lot of shopping centers, and we were going to have, as the sixth delegation this evening, presentation MXDR Development Consultants that have done an impact study for the Williams neighborhood and the impact on the Willoughby Town Center. So, we're very concerned. Those projections showed anywhere from a 15% to 20% reduction in sales. And if anybody who's in the retail business, I think Councilor Spire or you are, you know that a 15% to 20% impact can be disastrous. So, we're very concerned with what is in the neighborhood plan. I know, Mayor, you've been very proud, and the council, in terms of the public consultation process and engagement. This hasn't happened since November of 2016. So, what we would like to do is have the opportunity to have ourselves and our consultant... We presented our report in July of last year to staff, Long Range Planning, Jason Chu. But I noticed that it's not in your council package, and I'm not sure why that is the case, but it would have been useful information for you. We also understand that there is subsequent work that's been done for the township by either GP Rollo and Associates or perhaps Coriolis Consulting, which is analyzing the retail potential in the area. We haven't had the benefit of those reports, and neither have you. So, in closing, what we would like to do is have an opportunity for the Williams neighborhood plan to be properly debated and for the stakeholders such as us, which have a tremendous amount at stake, not only today, but we've got another 250,000 square feet of commercial projected for the Willoughby Town Center. And we're in, as I say, in for a development permit for our fifth phase right now. So, we would like an opportunity to debate that and review the other developers' consulting reports so that we can refute those. The one thing I can say to you as a retail consultant that was... I was a managing partner at Thomas Consultants, who I believe is their consultant. I was there for 15 years, is that if you put a 150,000-square-foot shopping center on 19 acres, six blocks east of us, when all you've got is ALR to the south and to the east, until you get to Trinity Western, there is going to be an impact. So, we would either like you to further restrict the square footages of those retailers so that at least we're on equal footing and we have an ability to compete and possibly have the opportunity to debate this in front of council and have presentations from our respective consultants.
Okay, your time is...
Thank you. That's the best I could do from memory, so thank you.
You did a good job. I want... I know you mentioned it, and I just missed it. How many square feet of retail is there in the Williams neighborhood plan when it's built out? Not the... Sorry, not Williams. I mean, in the Willoughby Town Center, when it's completely built out.
The Willoughby Town Center, today, we have... We're actually hoping to open our next phase this week. It was supposed to be last September. Construction takes time, but it will be opening... Get occupancy this week. That will make it around 125,000 square feet, I believe, and there's another... Well, up to 400,000 square feet of potential if you include the school site on the corner, which will eventually relocate.
Okay, so up to 400 eventually is the ultimate buildup.
But, Mayor, our concern is that if this competing shopping center goes in, they're going to... They'll take the tenants, and they'll take the sale, so it's not good.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Richter has a question.
Yeah. So, you had sent an email, I believe, to mayor and council on the weekend, sort of going over some of these points, and I just want to make sure I'm understanding it correctly. So, you have consultants that did a report on the negative impact of the size of this. You presented that to staff. Did you ever hear back from them?
What we heard back from Russell and Jason was that staff had received our report and that it would be taken into consideration and that they were, in quote, "working on right-sizing the retail commercial node."
Okay, so, last summer, when you made your presentation, was it around... Was it 19 acres and 150,000 square feet at that point in time?
No, at that... Well, at that time, the only land-use plan that was available, Councilor Richter, was the November 2016 plan. We haven't... We have not been... There's been no discussion or no presentation of alternate plans since that time.
And in November of 2016, it was only supposed to be 12 acres, and now it's 19 acres.
It was... I think it was approximately 10 to 11. It was a red blob on the plan, so we did our best to measure it.
One of the other things that I recall in your email was about that it's all going to be surface parking up there.
Yes, yeah. Thank you for pointing that out. At the Willoughby Town Center, we have a requirement in the Yorkson plan to... For 50% of our parking to be either underground or surface. You may be aware that underground or... And recently, our recent project, we've done deck parking, is far more expensive than surface parking. So, we're at a significant disadvantage in terms of our construction costs vis-à-vis a free, you know, a non-enclosed, single-story retail shopping center six blocks away.
So, the facility is going to go off the highway, this proposed one, and you're just six kilometers south of that, so it'll impact you?
Just six blocks away.
Six blocks away?
Six blocks away.
Not even a kilometer, or maybe?
No, and it's closest edge. I think it's at 200 and... We're at 208th, roughly, and there it... I think it starts at 212th and goes to... It may be 214th and goes to 216th, so...
So, you're concerned about cannibalization of business, clearly.
We are. Yes, that's our primary concern, but also the fact that this runs contrary to the Willoughby plan that came many years ago. This goes... Is contrary to what was in the Yorkson neighborhood plan. And furthermore, it's actually contrary to what was in the technical report that was presented, the technical background report prepared by the township of Langley and with information from GP Rollo and Associates, that said that this should be a small, local, neighborhood-serving, walkable community. And a 19-acre shopping center with a... We hear a proposed Canadian tire and a very large, potentially Savon or some other grocery store is going to have a dramatic impact.
So, I can see how it would obviously impact Willoughby. What about Walnut Grove? Wouldn't it siphon business off Walnut Grove as well?
Yes, it will. And I think in the latest report, and I think that was the first time I saw a reference to an impact on Walnut Grove in the report to council. And the other thing that I found disturbing is there was reference to what they call comparison shopping, which is what we know as department store-type merchandise in the industry. So, that could be a Canadian tire. It could be a Walmart. I don't know what it is because it's unspecified, but it's a significant retail node that's going to be attracting a lot of traffic and business.
Okay, so as far as you know, there was a game plan set out in 2016. This game plan has been significantly altered with what's coming before council today.
Correct, and what we're hoping that you, as council, will do is that you will... You will ensure that what was in that technical background report, including the report by GP Rollo and Associates, is what we see in Williams and not what is proposed today. Personally, I think that a walkable, smaller, neighborhood-oriented convenience node of two to three acres is what our consultant had proposed, along with some highway commercial. And we wouldn't be adverse to a Canadian tire, by the way, because we won't get a Canadian tire at the Willoughby Town Center. It's just not appropriate. We're too dense in urban form, but some highway-oriented commercial, we would be fine with. But it's the... In particular, it's the neighborhood convenience retail that's our biggest concern, and a grocery store that's 50% bigger than what we have at the Willoughby Town Center today.
And just the last point of clarification, you had mentioned that the other people who are backing this mall did a report, but you haven't seen it?
We've... Anecdotally, we've just been told that Thomas Consultants has prepared a report on this. My former company I was with, that they prepared a report, or Coriolis. It's uncertain as to what that is, you know, who actually prepared the reports, but we haven't seen them. We do know that at the shopping center conference in January of 2017, and again in 2018, their retail leasing consultant had plans at the shopping center that were showing what looked like a large, non-enclosed shopping center in Williams.
So, what you'd really like us to do is to defer this or refer back to staff to have presentations on both these reports so we know exactly the decision we're making here? here?
Well, there's a process, either first and second reading or third reading, council can do that.
Yes, I think, well, I would defer to mayor and council as to how you would like to handle that, but I think it would be appropriate for us to have an opportunity to share with you our findings and to, for, you know, either the other applicant or the township to share the studies that have been done, so that we can get the facts on the table.
Thank you. Councillor Anderson?
Yes, thank you very much for coming. I did have a question having to do with, so there's an option that you are asking us, I think, potentially to consider, and that was to restrict the potential square footage of the other retail from what is currently being considered. So I was wondering if you, because you've just explained you have a lot of experience in this area, is that something that's fairly common from a planning perspective, that you make one subordinate, for example, to another to make sure that there isn't too much competition?
It is common. In the industry, we talk about the hierarchy of retail or shopping centers, and there are different scales, going from a regional mall like Willbrook to a community mall that might be like Willbrook Park with Safeway, to power centers, and then down to smaller neighborhood centers, which would be anchored by a grocery store, such as the Willoughby Town Center, and then from there you would go down to a local-serving convenience center. And for example, the population in the staff report that they're suggesting will come to Williams is now 4,500 people, I'm paraphrasing. For example, Yorkson will be 25,000 people when it's built out, if it meets its density. So we were relying on that 25,000, as well as the 4,000 next door, as support for our complex. And I can assure you that 4,500 square feet will not support a 43,000-square-foot grocery store nor a 63,000-square-foot Canadian Tire.
And just one final question. So if you could help us maybe imagine, because I don't have that good of imagination for sizes, is there something comparable that you could refer to that would be of the same size and scope of the one that's being proposed currently in the Williams neighborhood plan?
Well, thank you, councillor. I think what we had, what we had proposed in our consultant MXD, who's not here tonight, had suggested that something in the, comparable to what you find at 72nd and 200th Street would be a good example. We also provided the example of Carvath at 200th and 86th, where you've got some compatible retail and coffee shops and Happy Face Village, as we all know. So that scale, and maybe it's not all in one location, but I mean, if it's going to be walkable, maybe you have some on the south side of 80th, some on the north side of 80th, but we're thinking maybe two to three acres and maybe a 20,000-square-foot food store. Some have suggested that there aren't food stores in that size, but I mean, we all know nature's fair, market, we know choices. Loblaw's apparently has some urban formats in the 15,000 to 20,000 square foot range, so there's certainly grocery stores that could fit into that size range.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, no further questions, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so that completes the delegations, and we now move on to bylaws for first and second reading, and F1 is Williams neighborhood plan, bylaw number 5334, 5335, 5336. Could I have a motion, please? Councillor Whitmarsh, second by councillor Sparrow, and I have a discussion. Councillor Richter.
Yeah, this is a really important decision for us because of the location that it's going into, and of course, I've been on council for a while, as has councillor Long, and we remember the days of the 200th Street interchange and all the discussion that came out then about having highway commercial as a major draw, but what does that do to cannibalizing the smaller businesses around? What does that do for traffic in a major intersection? It seems to me like we're going down that route, except we're not doing it at 200th Street and the highway anymore, we're going to put it at 216th and the highway. I don't really feel comfortable voting on this right now until we've had a presentation. I think we should have a presentation from both the parties affected here. Mr. Carter, obviously being one, I would suggest whoever the proponent is, Mr. Mitchell, I believe, on the other side, so that we can understand their two reports and have a good sense of what it is that we're approving here before we put the rubber stamp on it and it's built and we end up with a bunch of vacant retail space in both Willoughby Town Center and/or Walnut Grove Town Center. So what I would like to do, I won't put the motion on right yet, I'll let everybody else have a chance to speak, but I will put my button on again. I'd like to refer first and second back to staff to review the reports on size and impact and to request the council receive presentations from both the proponents on these reports. I think that's the fair thing to do and probably the best thing to do when we think about the future of this community.
Thank you. I'll just add some comments right now. I appreciate Mr. Carter having, giving his presentation. I understand that there are others that want to present, but we do have our rules here on council, and really, the appropriate place at this stage is at the public hearing, and then we get to hear from everyone. At third reading, council has all kinds of opportunities to send it back for more information, send it back for more consultation, make changes, amendments at the time, but without hearing all of the parties and all of the interested people, I would prefer to see this move forward. I'll be supporting first and second reading to move forward to the public hearing. We can hear from the public, from all parties, and then make a decision at third reading, which is the normal course of action, and still allow us, for councillor Richter has suggested, if council still chooses to get more information, go back to public information.
Well, just a point of clarification, if I could ask, does that mean if they're going to come with a 20-minute presentation to the public hearing, we'll give them 20 minutes at the public hearing?
Sorry, I'm not, sorry, I have the floor, so, but to answer that question, no, they get five minutes, but council has the opportunity to take that information and then at third reading, refer it back for more public consultation, to refer it back for all kinds of reasons. That's the proper place to do it, in my opinion. Thank you. Councillor Long?
Well, your worship, it is, I wouldn't say confusing, but it's a challenging issue, and it doesn't, it doesn't feel to me like we have all the information. There were a number of delegations, in fact, 14 at one time this afternoon, and in council's wisdom, and I'm happy to say that that's probably, was a wise move, because we wouldn't even be starting this discussion until about 10:30. So we had a lot of people, though, that did want to come forward and speak to this, and I think if there's been consultants employed with information that council should see, we should really have those presentations first, in my opinion, because when we go to public hearing, I think, you know, you're going to be limited to your five minutes. There'll be other concerns that will come forward that we'll need to hear about, but this particular issue of the commercial, I would be, it would be good to hear, I think, for all of us at council, what the two sides are. And we've heard a little bit of one side now, and kind of in fairness to the other, to the proponent, I think we should hear their side too. So I would probably support a motion to defer it, at least until those presentations are made.
Thank you. Councillor Sparrow?
I think that we have a process, that we have opportunity to hear from the public through the public hearing process, and certainly we've had one issue been brought forward to us by the delegation this evening, and was stated, there were several others who wanted to speak as well, and I think the public hearing is an opportunity for them to provide that information to us. And certainly if council feels after the public hearing that there is a need for more information or for more reports, or for it to be referred back to staff to then deal with that issue further, that is the opportunity for us to do that. There could be other issues that we've not even thought of yet, that we could be hearing about when we, when we go through the proper legislative process of hearing from the public, and then we can actually lump it all together and send that all back to staff for them to deal with all at once, instead of us just taking one issue that's been brought for, brought to our attention and sending it off before we've even heard from the public. I want, I would like to hear from everyone, hear all sides. Certainly, they have opportunities to speak, they can come up and speak a second and third time if they, if they feel like they need to provide more information to us, and they can provide it to us in a written report as well. But I think that's the start. I certainly am not suggesting that we will be able to, you know, approve it as it is and not make any changes, but there's a way in the process for us to do that, and that's after we've heard from the public through the public hearing. So I'm not going to support deferring it, because I think we should hear all of the issues first and then take it one step at a time after we've heard from them and decide if there's changes that we want to make, and sending it back to staff at that point, so...
Councillor Anderson?
Yes, thank you, your worship. I will be supporting this going forward in the event that there's a motion, as councillor Richter has indicated, to staff so that we can have a presentation. One of the things I'm always grateful for in terms of our job is that we have a lot of discretion and latitude to change our plans from time to time, and I think this is one of the ones, for me, that's very compelling. It's a neighborhood plan, it's the last neighborhood plan we're going to put in place in the Williams neighborhood. It's true that there will be an opportunity for individuals, everybody who wants to come to speak to that will be able to come, but I think that this is a critical component. My concern, aside from, you know, what's been brought home today, well, home, home to us, I think, is that if there's a policy in place and, you know, there's some regularity in which following a policy is a prescribed thing to do, that if we're doing something either in a misguided or in a manner that's somewhat of an error, just because we don't necessarily have all the viable information, I'm not necessarily sure myself that a public hearing is going to be a sufficient way at this point to listen to that discreet information. The rest of the information, I'm happy to hear that from the public, and I'm sure there'll be a lot more things to consider, but I feel most comfortable myself going forward in the knowledge that we have given this particular focus and attention prior to going to the public hearing.
Thank you. Councillor Qualley?
Thank you. I'm going to support sending this to public hearing, because like councillor Sparrow, I'd like to hear from everybody. What we learned tonight was that there's some concerns out there, and I appreciate that Mr. Carter has a significant background and is speaking to concerns that he's presenting are valid concerns, and there's other people in the community who come from other backgrounds who are also going to have input and information relating to this, and I'd like to hear from them all, so we can get a full perspective on the project from everybody, not just from two different developers who have a different philosophy perhaps, or a different plan for the area. So I'm going to support sending it to public hearings, so we can hear from everybody, and then from there, we can decide what to do with it. If we want to defer from there, we can. If we want to refer, if we want to not pass it and send it back to staff, I mean, there's, the options are entirely up to us, but I'd like to make sure we're hearing from everybody and getting all the information before we, before we start making changes. I want to hear from everybody on what their perspective is of the plan.
Thank you. Councillor Davis?
Thank you. I would, I, also, I would like to hear from everybody. I think that if, we haven't, we, I fully support sending this to a public hearing, but we haven't set a date for a public hearing yet. It's to authorize staff to schedule the required public hearing. And I think that there is a big part of this plan up there that has confused me, and I'd like to hear both sides of the story, and at a public hearing, it's a good place, but it's a great place, everyone needs to come out and say, but the problem with this is there was a lot of information that came just from his memory, and I'd like to hear the, both sides of the story, if I hear them before, that's okay, that's, I think I'll support that. But definitely, we've, come third reading, we're going to have to hear it also because, but anyhow, so I just, my two bits.
Thank you. Mr. Seffy, when would the public hearing be scheduled? Is it for the next meeting?
Your worship, it would be typically the next regularly scheduled meeting of council, which will be the 23rd of April.
Okay, and perhaps you can help clarify just some of the process that we're going through here, if you can give some assistance.
Thank you, your worship. I guess a few comments. This is actually a township-initiated process, your worship. As you know, this is an enabled plan that staff initiated on the instructions of council several years ago, 2015, 2016, and has been through a fairly extensive consultative process. So while there may be some proponents on different sides of the spectrum, what I would like to remind, I guess, council and the public is that what you see in front of you is based on independent and professional staff position. We don't really have anything in mind other than the public interest, and that is what we have put together with the help of Mr. Chu and Mr. Nelson and their staff, who are here, to respond to any questions that council might have. Beyond that, your worship, the area has always been the Willoughby plan as employment-generating lands. So the intent of the Williams plan has always been to have some areas for employment-generating uses that provide jobs close to people's homes. That still remains the case today. There are some residential uses, some commercial uses, to support the employment-generating lands. Since the Willoughby plan, there have been many changes, including the university district designation, so this plan, just like any other plan that we go through, is a long-term vision. It provides a 20, maybe a 30-year build-out. So we have that in mind as we determine what the appropriate uses and the scope and rightsizing of those uses might be. So it is with the, with the consideration of the entire area, including university district, that the proposal includes the commercial node. The other things that I wanted to mention, your worship, the Yorkson plan that the Willoughby Town Center is a part of, was approved by council in 2001. So that gives you an indication of how long it's taken for that plan to get to this stage today. So if you think about this plan being adopted by council in 2017, it will likely take about 10 to 15 years before it reaches a stage where it could potentially compete, if that's the right word, with any other areas. And finally, your worship, staff have confirmed through independent analyses by independent consultants, that the township of Langley is currently undersized, underserved, I should say, underserved for commercial uses. In fact, even with the Williams plan, the residents will still be underserved. I believe, Mr. Chu, if, if your numbers, if I can quote them, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the general industry number is four square feet per resident, per capita, and currently, and with the Williams plan, we will be still under three square feet per capita. So in no way is it satisfying the needs of the community, neither today nor in the future. As I said, this is a plan that will hopefully stand the test of time and not require, you know, several changes over the next few years, and it would be something to build on. If you wish, your worship, Mr. Chu and Mr. Nelson are here to respond to any questions.
Thank you, thanks for that. Councillor Whitmarsh is next.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I think this plan is a long vision, a long-term plan, and I would like to see this plan come to the public and get the public an opportunity to speak into it. I think regardless of which way we do it, I think we're going to get the information we need from the various consultants, we're going to get the information from the public, and so I'd rather follow the legislative process that's in place for us and have it go to public hearing, which is the process that we normally follow, and we can still get more information anytime we would like to. So I think it makes sense to go to public hearing, and I, therefore, I won't support this going to staff.
Thank you. Councillor Richter?
Has everybody spoken, because I'm...
Yeah, you're, I'm, the list of those who have spoken once is exhausted, and you're next.
Okay. Mr. Backen, is there anything prohibiting us from reviewing a plan prior to giving it first and second reading?
No, there isn't.
There's been a lot of talk about process, but process should include the opportunity to review. And is it fairer to developers to do the review at third reading, or is it fairer to do it before we give it first and second?
You're asking Mr. Backen through the chair?
Yes, I'm asking Mr. Backen.
Through the chair, thank you, Mr. Backen.
Your worship, through the process with council, we try to give them the information as we can, and of course, it's available to council at any time, from the time we receive it to the time council's aware of it. In that regard, there's nothing that prohibits council from delaying or slowing down. You raise a good question, though, in terms of the developers. As Mr. Seffy said, our concern is to, is not primarily about the developers. We respect the developer's position, but it's to make sure that council has the information to make the best decisions vis a vis the public interest, and that's what Mr. Seffy's speaking to with Mr. Nelson and Mr. Chu's support. We're trying to paint a picture that's comprehensive going for several years and mindful of the various positions, but not determined by them.
So if council doesn't feel they've got... So if council doesn't feel they've got enough information to make the right decision now, there's no rush to get this through first and second and the public hearing? Isn't it better that we have a full range of information to base a decision on?
Worship, once it's before council, it's council themselves that determine the process. So as was referenced, we were usual processes, but those processes are flexible to meet the needs of council as they determine appropriate for the circumstances.
Okay. I think there has been significant new information come forward from Mr Carter. We also got a report on table today from another delegation that we chose not to hear. So I would like to make the motion that we refer, or defer, I'm never quite sure which one, first and second reading in order that council receive presentations on both the reports referenced.
That would be a referral motion. Is that correct, Ms Power? Yeah, thank you, referring. Thank you. Sarah Sekler? Councillor Arneson seconds. So open up discussion on the referral. Any discussion on the referral? Councillor Long?
There's a timing issue potentially here, I suppose, because there's only so many Mondays, and there's a holiday in May. I wonder if staff have some comments about if this was to pass. I mean, could, could a presentation be given in the afternoon, for example? Is that something that would be doable? That an after, a presentation be given in the afternoon before public hearing? I mean, there was also talk earlier on, when the delegations were, were not accepted, that they could be referred to prior to the public hearing? I don't know if staff have some insight through, your worship, to...
Yep. Thank you, Mr, Mr Backen.
Starting with the second question, the suggestion was that any delegations could be referred to the public hearing themselves if that was the will of council. There was a discussion about that, but that suggestion was not successful. As to the process, the process can be what council wishes it to be. There is the next meeting in April. I believe there's a, a meeting in early May. We then default to a couple of meetings in June and a couple of meetings in July. So that gives you the timeframe going forward. And it's really more about having council receive the information prior to third reading that they feel is necessary to make an informed decision. We certainly, again, respect the development community's concerns, but again, our, our goal here is to look at something broader and bigger. And it's really incumbent upon council to tell us if we've given that information, and if not, then we follow the process that council sees appropriate.
Thank you.
Well, I just wanted to repeat that I did hear several times that we have to hear from the public and that this deferral might, might in some way hinder that, and I don't think that would be the case at all. We're going to be having more information and a couple more presentations before the public can weigh in, so I don't feel if, if there's any fear of that. But we'll see how it goes, I guess.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the referral? Seeing none, I'm going to call the question on the referral. This will be F1. And referral is defeated. Councillor Whitmarsh, Mayor Froze, Councillor Qualley, Councillor Sparrow is opposed. So we're back to the main motion. Any further discussion on the main motion? Councillor Long?
We'll be able to get some of this information. I mean, it was, it came very quickly today, and I heard there was another report in some emails. So if this is passed, your worship, which is fine, it's going to go to public hearing, council will receive these reports?
Yes. So we could certainly, by direction of staff, if they have any additional reports, they could provide them to council, well, really, as staff can at any time, but certainly before public hearing. And so we'd be asking that by direction. Thank you. And so with that, I haven't spoken. So now we're, we're, the motion is to, is to first and second reading. Okay? And so councillor Richter, I know your second time was to make a motion, so if you wish to speak...
Oh, but we're back to the main motion.
We're, we're on the main motion.
Okay. Well, I have a, a number of questions about the main motion, but I also like very much what councillor Long suggested, which is that we perhaps have the two groups in question make a presentation to the next council meeting, or the next afternoon council meeting prior to the public hearing in the evening. So some of the questions that I have, okay, why did we go from 12 acres to 19 acres? And why is it surface parking when three blocks or six blocks south, it's underground parking? Why did we increase it to 150,000 square feet? Can council please get copies of both the reports before the public hearing? And better yet, can council get presentations on both the reports before the public hearing? And with respect to the idea of it taking 30 years for a neighbourhood plan to build out, do we really think it's going to take 30 years for this commercial node to be built? Seriously? At Highway 1 and 216th? I think that'll probably be the first piece that's built. So having said that, I'd like to put another motion forward.
Excuse me, you asked some questions, so I'd like to...
No, I, I'm just saying, those are the questions that I have that I don't have answers for.
I think it was Mr Seffy has something to say.
But what I'd like to do now, because I can only speak one more time, is that I'd like to put forward a motion that we invite the two groups to make a presentation to council prior to, in a meeting prior to the public hearing, which apparently is going to happen at the next meeting. So I would make that motion.
Sarah Sekler? Councillor Davis seconds. So open up the motion. Any discussion on that? Again, I think I'll repeat, I think the public hearing is a great vehicle. We already have, and we get, they will be invited to the public hearing, and sta, and staff will be providing council, members of council, with any information that they have prior to that. So I won't be supporting that. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. And that's defeated. Councillor Whitmarsh, Mayor Froze, Councillor Qualley, Councillor Sparrow opposed. Back to the main motion. Seeing no further discussion, I'll call the question. That carries with councillor Richter opposed. And I'll move on to bylaws for first, second, and third reading. G1 is 218, 2018 Local Area Service Tax Bylaw, bylaw 5360, and bylaw 5361. Could I have a motion, please? Councillor Qualley, second by councillor Davis. Discussion on G1. Seeing none, I'll call the question. Carries unanimously. Move on to bylaws for consideration at third reading. And this H1 is official community plan amendment and rezoning application 100150, and development permit applications 100854 and 120870. This is investor properties, 53, bylaw 5339, bylaw 5340, and bylaw 5349. Motion was by, I heard some move by somebody. Councillor Long, second by councillor Qualley. Discussion on H1. Seeing none, I'll call the question. Carries with councillor Arneson, councillor Richter opposed. And we move on to H2, and this is rezoning application 100498. This is Broch, and it's bylaw 5350. Could I have a motion, please? Need a motion? Councillor Qualley, seconder. Councillor Whitmarsh, discussion on Broch. Councillor Long?
The size of this operation is far exceeding what, what should be on land that's above an aquifer, in my opinion. It should be in an industrial section, so I won't be supporting it.
Arneson, second.
Oh, I thought councillor Richter was ahead of me. That's okay, she's all right. Thank you. I, I agree with councillor Long, and I'm sure all of us recall what the comments were at the public hearing about this. I, I feel like there was just a litany of problems with having this in the ALR. And particularly for me, the lack of a business plan and the scope of what they're planning is, I, I just don't understand how, I mean, I understand technically how we could receive an application, but I don't see how we could be supportive of it without any kind of knowledge about what that would look like in the community. So personally, I heard loud and clear that the neighbours are very concerned about different biohazards, they're concerned about the water, the quality, the quantity of the water, and that definitely those who expressed an opinion would prefer it to be an industrial area. So short of any other kind of information that I think could inform this, in good conscience, I cannot support this.
Thank you. Councillor Qualley?
Yeah, I think I agree with councillor Arneson. This application would be good, getting a different consideration from me if it was in, say, Gloucester or someplace like that. I think this application is apparently in compliance with the Ministry of Ag standards, but it's very clear to me that it doesn't meet the standards of our community. So I'm not going to support the application to rezon, but I am really, really concerned that the Agricultural Land Commission can ultimately override our decision and still allow this to happen. So this can still happen without our consent. So that causes me tremendous concern. And unfortunately, whether we approve this or not, the ultimate decision lies with the ALC. So, yeah, I am, I'm definitely not supporting this application, but I am concerned that other levels of government may.
Thank you. Councillor Davis?
Thank you. There was a real good turnout for the public hearing. We heard an awful lot of information. As a farmer, I am surprised this application even got before council. One question I have is, when was, through you, Mayor, through you, Mayor Froze, to staff, when was the last time a slaughterhouse came before council?
An abattoir? Mr Backen, do you have any idea?
It would be probably in excess of 15 years, your worship, so it's been quite some time. But just as a brief point of clarification, reference was made to Agricultural Land Commission. It's the Ministry of Agriculture, the Ministry of Agriculture, more specific, that has passed legislation that indicates some of the right to farm legislation, that any bylaw that's in contravention, such as a zoning bylaw of the unfettered right of farmers to farm, could be struck down. So it's, it's just a point of whose decision-making it is. It's not the ALC, it's the Ministry of Agriculture.
It was my mistake. Thank you for bringing that up.
Thanks. Thank you.
Okay, as, as a, as a township, we have always recognised the value of groundwater. A very large percent of our groundwater comes from wells, and it's all about the water. You can bring up the right to farm, but all of the existing farms around 995 to 24th Street also have the right to farm. They also have the right to safe drinking water, safe bath time, and safely to provide water for their livestock's or crops. The right to farm means to me actively farming with all normal farm practices, sights, smells, and sounds. Processing is not the same as farming. Processing requires large amounts of power, hydro truck access, water, and proper facilities to compost and to render the byproducts of the chickens. This is not what farmland is intended for. Processing is an industry. This belongs in an industry, industry park. Our township has a water management plan, and according to that plan, it is our job as council to protect the groundwater as well as the streams and rivers. Kevin Larson, who heads the water management, was here three or four weeks ago, and he talked about our water security and the aquifers. And there was a question down, councillor Richter asked, if you contaminate an aquifer, can you fix it? And the answer was simply no. There is no doubt that the volume of water used in a slaughterhouse would be an excessive draw on the aquifer and would impact surrounding wells. Even the chance of a contamination of the aquifer is too much for a gamble for anyone to take. Mayor Froze pointed that out a few, a year, or some time ago, and that the township land zoned for agriculture would not allow for a slaughterhouse facility, but that an industry land, industrial land would provide a better host. And I agree with him. If we allow this application and the groundwater is eventually contaminated, as we heard today about the trees and the aquifer from some of the delegations, we can't fix it. It cannot be fixed. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Richter?
I think councillor Davis had it very, very well. This whole applica, one size doesn't fit all. I'm sorry. It's, it shouldn't be one size for farming in all of the township. That's just not right, and it's just not fair. And it's particularly not fair when one farmer can push other farmers out of business because either there's no water, or their crops are damaged, or whatever other reason. So I agree that this is an industrial activity. It should be an industrial area, and it should be on metro water. It should not be on the aquifer down there. And I also think that a lot of people have invested a lot of time and money in agritourism in South Langley, and something like this will just kill agritourism down there. And that's not right. So I'm not supporting this application.
Thank you. Councillor Whitmarsh?
Well spoken, councillor Davis. I fully agree with what you said. I couldn't say it any better. This doesn't belong here, and I certainly won't be supporting it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Just wrap it up. Sounds pretty clear what council's thinking. Certainly, we're looking at a land use application. This is a rezoning. And hearing from the public, certainly the neighbours in the area are opposed to it for a variety of reasons. It's interesting, at the planning committee meeting at Metro Vancouver, a motion came across our desk, and it was for an abattoir in, in city, in the city of Surrey, which is in the Agricultural Land Reserve, which does have an ALC exclusion. But what they were looking for, and the reason it came to our committee, was that they were looking for an extension, an expansion to the sewer system to, to allow for an expansion of the abattoir. They already had, you know, the sewer system in place, they were just looking for an expansion, and, and we passed it, the city of Surrey had passed it. This is a little bit different. There is no sewer in that area. The concern we've heard is the groundwater, and it's the wastewater that would be, be produced by this facility. And certainly, that is one of the main concerns that I have. So the land use in that area without the proper servicing, and it might be a long time before the servicing gets there, is one of the reasons I won't be supporting this. So with that, I'll call the question. And the motion fails with councillor Richter, councillor Arneson, councillor Whitmarsh, Mayor Froze, councillor Qualley, councillor Sparrow, councillor Davis, councillor Long opposed. And we move, excuse me, no. We can, if we can hold the applause till when I close the meeting, that would be great. But not during the meeting. You can do whatever you want when the meeting's over. I appreciate it. Thank you. All right. So now we move on to bylaws for final adoption. I1 is the facility capital works loan authorization, bylaw number, bylaw 2018, bylaw number 5346. And could I have a motion, please? Councillor Qualley, second by councillor Davis. Any discussion on I1? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Carries, councillor Richter opposed. We move to I2, highway closure, dedication, removal, and disposal, bylaw number 5355. Could I have a motion, please? Councillor Sparrow, councillor Qualley, seconds. Discussion on I2, seeing none. Call the question. And it carries unanimously?
Maybe a second?
Yep. Okay. I've got to get organized here. People are leaving just before the mayor's report. Best part, if I can find it. There we go. All right. We all just wait for staff to, there we go. Well, good evening, everyone. I hope everyone enjoyed their Easter and spring break. On Tuesday, March 20, was the annual Greater Langley Chamber of Commerce Leadership Panel Discussion, where the city of Langley, Mayor Ted Schaefer, Langley MLA Mayor Pollack, Fort Langley Aldagrove, not Fort Langley, Langley Aldagrove, MLA Rich Coleman, and myself answered questions from the audience pertaining to transportation and social issues facing Langley, the Langleys. On Tuesday, March 27, Shane Simpson, Minister of Social Development and Poverty Reduction, dropped in and paid me a visit in my office, and we discussed several items that were Langley-specific, including the Quality and Support of Housing Project, the Langley Youth Resource Centre, and how we can work together towards any social issues, issues such as homelessness. And I think this is part of their outreach the ministry was doing in looking at poverty reduction throughout the province. On Thursday, March 29, I had the opportunity as a sports fan to promote the Vancouver Giants in an interview for a nationally televised program in support of our Giants. I want to congratulate the hockey team and coaches on their well-played season and wish them the best over the summer. We look forward to the 2018-2019 season at the Langley Event Centre. And they lost the first round in the seventh game in overtime. Wasn't it overtime? Yeah. So it was a good, a good games all the way along, except for the one I went to. So, it was a good, a good games all the way along, except for the one I went to. They lost handily, but.
He shouldn't go.
I shouldn't go. I learned that. Don't go. Yeah. It was a funny kind of a playoff series, because they all were losing their home games, except for the last one. Victoria won their home game, which is the one that counted. On Thursday, April fifth, I attended the Fraser Valley Career Connection Conference in Abbotsford and had the opportunity to hear an amazing young speaker talking about bridging the gap, focusing on jobs and millennials in the workplace. I learned a lot, and also learned that there's a Generation Z out there. That's the next one coming up. But really dynamic speaker, and it was a job fair, it was for, and three of the municipalities of the city of Langley, Township of Langley, City of Abbotsford, Chilliwack, Mission, all got together to showcase, and a lot of different businesses were there. On Thursday, April the fifth, was also the township's annual volunteer appreciation evening at the Langley Event Centre. I'd like to congratulate Carl and Tony Dreisi in receiving the John and Muriel Arneson Award, Sylvia Anderson for receiving the Eric Flower to Volunteer Award, and Laura Stead for winning the Pete Swenson Outstanding Community Youth Award. These nominees are all amazing, and we congratulate all of them. And you know, it's a great event where we'd just like to thank all the volunteers in the Township of Langley, and there are so many of them. These folks are just a few examples of what Langley produces in volunteerism, and I really want to thank all the volunteers, everyone who comes out to volunteer, no matter where it is. On Saturday, April the seventh, I attended a dinner for the homeless and was able to provide a few words. It was an Easter dinner, welcome. And I'd like to thank the organizers who provided dinner once a month, the first Saturday of every month, to homeless and less fortunate at the Colma Restaurant in the city of Langley. And it was, it was a good turkey dinner, I must say. Lots of, lots of sponsors contributed.
Have you ever had a bad turkey dinner?
I have. Yeah, actually, I have. Yeah. This was a good one. Lots of gravy. I also want to mention the Mayor's Caucus that took place last month in Squamish. It was a very informative event. Topics of discussion included the opiate crisis, proposed marijuana regulation, and the rural-urban divide. It is always informative to hear from other mayors and what's facing their communities, and ways in which they're dealing with similar issues, and looking at ways to tackle these concerns. Very informative, and it was a, it was a great, great to meet other mayors. I think about sixty to eighty mayors were there. I wanted to mention the Langley Regional Airport, which appears to be getting closer to the completion of its new building. There are some photos on hand, and we're looking forward to the official opening in late June or early July. So, it's a new tower and office buildings and restaurant facility at the airport. Lots of good jobs and business coming to our airport. Lastly, work on the two-oh-eighth street overpass is getting nearer to completion, and today the new lanes were temporarily opened. Traffic will shift between the old and new portions as the rest of the work is done. They still have to widen the sidewalks and put in safety fencing on the east side, do some work on the median, as well as landscaping and paving. But the project should be completed around the end of May. This is great news for those traveling in the area, and it appears this project will be completed on time and on budget. And this is a big piece of that two-eighth corridor to help widen the corridor and make travel between, in our community, much better. And upcoming events that we have, on Thursday, April twelfth, the Isoasis CAT facility at Lapps is going to have its grand opening. Oops, went to something else there. Sunday, April twenty-second is Arbor Day. We heard, already heard about that, the Phil Jackman Park, Philip Jackman Park in Aldergrove. And Thursday, April twenty-sixth is Municipal Awareness Day, and on that day, the Township of Langley is one hundred and forty-five years old. On Saturday, April twenty-eighth, is the Day of Mourning for QP. We will be having a moment of silence at the civic facility and the operations centre on April the twenty-seventh. And so, with that, that's my mayor's report, and we'll move on. I did mention I was at a joint planning, or planning committee meeting with Metro Vancouver, and we did discuss a lot of issues that, in our area, and if.
The slide before that, which was.
Okay, go back to the slide. Yeah. Oh, there's Isoasis, there it is. Army, who's, okay, the Army League of Canada.
That's right. So, there was a.
Yeah, I missed that one. Counselor Whitmarsh, did you, Counselor?
That's a good one, sir.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll get it out.
It's at the Spartan Athletic Awards Banquet, so just giving an award to one of our volleyball players there, Trinity Western. And so, he's just a little bit taller than I am. I think he's six foot nine, so that's a pretty tall guy. Anyways.
Great, thanks.
And, oh, well, Counselor Arneson was there as well with me to, and she also presented some awards to some tall people as well.
Great, thank you. Seems to be a theme tonight. Counselor Long?
We're trying to tell you about the picture of.
Yeah, we'll go back to that picture.
Of the, yeah, the, there was a commemorative ceremony in Surrey for the one-hundred-and-one anniversary of the.
Vimy Ridge.
Of Vimy Ridge. So, there's a, there was a picture there.
Okay.
And there were quite a number of cadets there, a couple of hundred at least. It was pretty miserable weather, too. But there they were, and the ceremony was really, really well done.
And that's today, the anniversary. First day of the battle was April ninth.
Yeah, that's right. And so, it's, I think, a real honor that we were there. Counselor Arneson's been there in the past. Counselor Rudy Stonenberg from the city goes every year, and I did attend this year. We were the only ones there. There was nobody from Surrey there. But it was a terrific event, as you can see on the left there. And we laid a wreath on behalf of the township.
Great, thank you. Okay, Counselor Richter?
Well, I just had a question or a comment. I would hope our metro reps don't support pensions.
Good, good comment. All right. I think that's coming to a meeting near us at some point in time, so.
Well.
There we go. Oh, sorry.
I believe Counselor Long was saying it's going to be reconsidered.
Yeah, it's been in the media that apparently Metro's bringing, bringing it back for reconsideration, so then the board will be able to take a look at it then.
So, who will be our representatives at that board meeting?
I'm there for Counselor Fox, and Counselor Long is there as a director.
Okay, and so, are you guys going to vote yes or no?
I haven't seen the report yet. I haven't seen the report yet. I haven't, I haven't seen it all, so we'll, we'll, I'll let you know on the, what is it, the twenty-eighth?
Please, twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh is the meeting. I'll let you know on the twenty-eighth.
Well, I may as well, I may as well report in now that the.
You were there the first time around. I wasn't, so I haven't seen the report.
Yeah, so very soon after the decision was made, I did contact staff. In fact, I sent an email on Easter weekend requesting that the issue be revisited and reconsidered, and I was quite happy to not support it. I didn't hear from any staff until Tuesday morning, because of, of course, it was Easter weekend. Staff called me, and we discussed how the motion should be worded, and how reconsideration could be put forward. Your worship, you were informed about it, as well as Rudy Stonenberg, the councillor from the city of Langley, who was willing to second the motion. Later on that day, I got a phone call from Chair Moore, and he asked what I was up to, and I explained very carefully to him what my plans were, and that I had been talking with staff and already submitted in writing a request to have it reconsidered. And thank you very much. He said fifteen minutes later, it seems he changed his mind and sent a news release out. And I'm happy that at least it's, he saved me the trouble, I suppose. So, as the chair, he has the privilege to bring the motion back without even having to get a vote for reconsideration. So, it will be on the agenda, April twenty-seventh meeting.
It'll be interesting, watch the bicycle pedal backwards. All right. That completes the reports. We'll move on to the agenda. Okay, so we'll move on to other business. I'm just going to clear the queue here, make sure everything's, okay. Counselor Arneson, Counselor Arneson.
Yes, thank you, worship. I will just read, not the preamble, but the final portion of the resolution. Therefore, it be resolved that council directs staff to review and initiate the provisions of the interim tree-cutting bylaw twenty-fourteen, number five-oh-seven-one, in order to provide an opportunity to proceed with the township-wide tree-protection bylaw discussion whilst proactively protecting our urban tree canopy throughout the township. Nice to move.
Is there a second there? Counselor Richter seconds. Discussion on the motion, Counselor Long.
We've been through this before, and what we had to do with Brookswood is get it done very quickly, because as soon as you start talking about it, chainsaws start revving up, people start getting quite concerned. So, how fast could this be done? Because the longer we wait, the worse it's going to be for the trees. We have the interim bylaw that was put in place in Brookswood. Could that not be applied?
That's the intention.
Is that basically what you're saying? I mean, it doesn't, we spent a lot of money, a lot of time and effort with the lawyer, Liddstone, in crafting that. I've been reading bylaws from other municipalities, from Abbotsford. We want to be consistent with our neighbors if this is going to go. But would that something that staff could enact very quickly, rather, and could it, could the motion be made? If this motion is made tonight, how quickly would it happen?
So, Backen, do you have any insight on that?
As the bylaw previously existed, it'd have to be tweaked a little bit, but it could happen fairly quickly. Mr. Seffey, do you have a sense of how long that may, may take?
Fairly quickly is the right way of putting it, your worship. Perhaps, again, four to six weeks.
And it goes through how many readings? And we have to have public, is public going to have a chance to speak on this? Or is it, there's a first and second, and then public hearing?
Preliminary, I think we view it as being a land-use designation bylaw, so that would require first and second reading, public hearing, and third reading, then final. So, that'd be a series of four meetings, first and second to the final.
Now, wait, if you don't mind, your worship, I thought the other one we did first, second, third reading all at once.
If we view it as being regulatory, we can, we can do so. This one, though, is a bit broader in application to the entire township, so I'm not ruling that out, but I just want to make sure we look at the longer period till we can review that.
And I don't want to make haste and have any mistakes made, but we do need to move forward if this is going to pass very quickly.
Thank you. Counsel Arneson?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to speak to this, actually, so, and I think some of my comments will address that. So, we've heard that the Township of Langley is one of the fewer communities within the lower mainland that has no tree-protection bylaw. And what we understood now from the community is that there were lots of individuals who still anticipated that when we had the interim clearcutting bylaw, that that was still in force. However, what happened was, when we adopted the Brookswood Fernridge Area Plan, the new OCP, it had a companion tree-protection bylaw, and therefore, the other one was rescinded because it was an interim measure. So, I want to refer to the fact that this was in twenty-fourteen, something that a council decided to endorse due to similar circumstances, because there was concern that clearcutting was taking place prior to the institution of that new OCP. And, you know, today, we've heard a lot from individuals who are very knowledgeable professionals who are suggesting to us that working towards something, a township-wide tree-protection bylaw, would be most advantageous. However, in the interim, the problem that we do have, and we faced before, is that the more we consider this, and if there's too much of a time lag, in fact, we are creating more peril for the trees, because it does incentivize people going out there and proactively taking out trees that they might consider to be in the way for some future development plans. So, further to Counselor Long's point, I believe that this is what I consider to be a turnkey solution, because it's something that we already had in place. It's already drafted, it's been vetted, and actually, it was in place for quite a long time. So, I think that it's really shown itself to be durable and effective. And further to Mr. Backen's points, I think if there are any further tweaks, we might have staff review it, and it can be done after the fact if necessary. And all of this is in aid, obviously, of the fact that, it's too bad that Counselor Fox wasn't here, because I remember a couple of times in the last discussion about going forward with the tree-protection bylaw, he actually suggested that probably a good idea was to have an interim measure in place. And that is something that I would urge council, under the circumstances, to move forward with most expeditiously, because in the duration while we're talking about this, this is really the time that we need to protect the trees that we hope to be able to protect in the longer term with the bylaw for the entire township, should it go forward.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mr. Seffey, just want to ask, the comment I heard was that there's no tree protection in, in the Township of Langley, and as I understand it, we have protection through development permits. We have, when there's building permits, then there's trees, you know, the trees get, have to be cut down to allow the building to go up. There's Agricultural Land Reserve, which, you know, we basically don't have authority over trees. Can you sort of explain some of the tree protection that already exists in the Township of Langley?
Yes, your worship. As you have referenced, your worship, we do not have any control over the ALR in terms of a bylaw that might prohibit removal of trees in the ALR. In fact, that is something that is contrary to farming, because, as you can imagine, the trees have to be removed in order to accommodate or facilitate farming. Beyond that, we do have the tree replacement provisions in the subdivision development service in bylaw that requires replacement of trees, even if it's included in the, in the developable, in the buildable portion of a lot, there has to be replacement of trees in terms of, I think it's three per acre, and there's a, there's a formula that goes in there in terms of, if there is a tree that's protected, then there's a credit provided, and otherwise, there's a number of trees that have to be replaced, replaced for every tree that's removed.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Richter?
Yeah, I, I'm just amazed at the number of trees that have been coming down in the last little while throughout the township. And I applaud Counselor Arneson's idea of bringing this forward. I think we have to close down what's happening, calm people down. There's no need to cut every single tree down that's on your property in order to get away from a bylaw. That's not right. It's not thinking long-term, and it's not thinking about the future of the community. I appreciated very much the comments that one of the delegations made tonight with regards to if you take down a Douglas fir and replant it with a ten or a five-foot tree, for that matter, how much damage and loss of, how much damage is being done to the aquifer, as well as to the wildlife corridors, as well as to the overall aesthetics and beauty of our community just by doing so. I appreciate that we cannot do anything about ALR land, but we can do something about all the other land, and I think we need to. And I thank Counselor Arneson for bringing this forward.
Thank you. Counsel Whitmarsh?
Yeah, just a question through your worship to staff, just so I understand correctly. Even, even in the presence of a, of a tree bylaw, if someone wanted to, or was going to develop their property or build on their property, through a development permit or a building permit, they could still remove trees, even in the presence of a tree bylaw? Is that correct?
That's correct, your worship. The zoning bylaw provides for a certain area within any lot for building of a building pursuant to the, the uses that are permitted in the zoning bylaw. So, in the event that there was a tree-protection bylaw that prohibited removal of trees, the buildable area of a lot would still be exempt from, from such bylaw.
Okay, so the, the purpose of the tree bylaw, then, is not to prevent the removal of trees for building, is to prevent the removal of trees just for the sake of the removal of trees? Like, I don't know, maybe that's kind of a question, maybe a statement, but it seems that anyone who wants to develop or build can remove trees anyways. So, this would be for people who don't plan to build, don't plan to do anything with their property, and decide to remove trees. That seems to be what the tree bylaw would be for. Is that, is that correct?
Mr. Seffey?
I think the question goes to the, the root of the motion, your worship, which is, I guess, a question for, for the mover, as opposed to staff.
Right.
I do have a question.
Okay.
So, you're, you're on the list, so we'll, we'll get you on there.
I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Qualley?
Thanks, yeah. I, the way I read the old bylaw, looking back at the one that was reinst, that was put in place in two thousand and fourteen, it seems that that bylaw was put in place to prevent clearcutting. And the, this bylaw isn't about, there's a lot of confusion about this. This isn't about the removal of trees at development sites, because that's going to continue to, to happen. This is a removal of a single tree in a, in a yard, if somebody wants to install a kid's swing set and needs to move a tree. I understand, and through you, Mayor Fros, to Mr. Seffey, I just want to make sure I understand the process. So, in an interim, if there was an interim tree preservation bylaw, and somebody needed to take down a tree that they thought was dead, or they wanted to take down a tree because they wanted to put up a slide for their kid, they would have to get, first of all, an arborist's report on the status of the tree. If the tree was dead or alive, regardless, they would have to bring that arborist's report to the municipal hall, apply for a permit to remove the tree. What would that permit fee be?
What would the permit be?
Yeah, the fee.
The fee?
Yeah.
I don't recall, your worship, what the. I don't recall, your worship, what the fee was in the interim bylaw that we had in place for Brookswood. I don't recall what it was, I apologize.
It doesn't say inside the bylaw, so, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
That's okay, councillor, your worship, Miss Sinclair just informed me, $500.
So the permit fee is $500 to remove a tree, after you've paid for the arborist's report, but what if the tree isn't dead? Then even after they've done the arborist's report and paid their permit fee, they'll still not be allowed to remove that tree, is that correct?
Just to go back, your worship, the $500 that was quoted was actually a fine, it was not a permit fee. So we still have to go back and search what the permit fee was. So, and the, under the interim bylaw that we had for Brookswood, the billable area of a lot would be exempt. Beyond that, anything that the bylaw, the zoning bylaw permitted in terms of accessory uses, so a garage, anything like a swimming pool, a tennis courts, things of that nature that were pursuant to the bylaw, the provisions of the bylaw in terms of accessory uses or permissible uses of the lot, would also be exempt. Then beyond that, if an owner wished to have a tree removed, they were also entitled to, I believe it was maybe two or something, a certain number per year. And then beyond that, what they could do is, if they felt that the tree was either jeopardizing safety, or maybe not healthy, or somehow required removal, they would have to submit an arborist's report, and the staff would review that and issue a permit for the removal of that particular tree.
But the, a permit would only be issued if the tree was dead, is that correct?
Not necessarily just dead, but also if it was posing danger to public safety or health of the residents.
Okay, okay, thanks for clearing that up. I think we, I heard a lot of information tonight that was interesting, that sort of speaks to the need to have a proper bylaw around this, and I think we've made the referral already to have a community-wide discussion. This bylaw that was put in place in 2014 was very specific to one very specific neighborhood, and it was put in place for 75 days. That's the bylaw that was put in place in 2014. So I, I'm not gonna support this same bylaw going forward. I think that we've, for the people we've heard from that would like to have a tree bylaw, we've also heard from people that wouldn't like to have a tree bylaw. So I think this is gonna require some broad community consultation, and not us making up bylaws on the fly around this.
Thank you. Councillor Arneson?
Yes, thank you, your worship. I think that, you know, from my perspective, what we need to do is to look at this and say, this is not a measure that's meant, from my perspective, to micromanage people, and to say, you cannot take out some trees. I think the whole system that was originally developed for the purpose was to prevent individuals who would consider in a position prior to a development plan of any type, or neighborhood plan, or whatever it is, to go forward and say, I'm gonna get a logging truck, and I'm gonna go out there on Saturday, and I'm going to log everything here, because in the event that I go forward with an application, I don't want to have any pesky trees in my way, so that I can put in either a giant house, or ten giant homes, or whatever. I think that we have to look beyond the fact that private property rights, which we all acknowledge and we are subject to, must now consider what scientific proof there is, that we cannot continue to destroy our natural resource. We just recently endorsed a council policy that said that we are going to manage our natural resources, and I would like to know how that, as a notion, can interconnect with the fact that we are continuing to defer any operation that would effectively protect whatever tree canopy we have, which, by the way, we don't even know how much we have. So irrespective of, you know, the question about the LR, and we all know that we cannot do anything about that, I'm gonna use the example of the Williams neighborhood. We don't even have a plan yet, and yet, I could hazard a guess that if anybody wanted to, they could go there tomorrow and take off all the trees. So then everything, to me, is very much calculated on the fact that all of the tree protections that we try and put in place, all of the plans, saying, we'll give you bonus density for in return for saving some trees, we've got these tree muses now that we're considering, all of that could be for naught by the time we get around to the neighborhood plan, unless we have something in play. So I'm strongly suggesting that if we don't do that, and we've already deferred having any further conversation until sometime in the future about a tree protection bylaw, that it is most rational to put this in place and have something that we can, it's already been proven in a local neighborhood to have been very effective. And why it was effective is because everybody knew that it was in place, and there was also an observational kind of aspect, where people could look out there and say, hey, I see that there's a logging truck, I wonder what it's doing there. So, you know, whether or not you support this or not, I would strongly recommend that we, at the very least, consider that it could be a long time, unfortunately, before we have a consensus about a tree protection bylaw. It was a long time, at least 18 months, while we discussed the OCP in Brookswood Fernridge, and there can be a lot of carnage in that amount of time.
Thank you. Councillor Sparrow?
Yeah, I think councillor Arneson's points, I think, speaks to where I'm coming from, is that, I think we need to have a full discussion on this, and that the description that councillor Arneson just gave about preventing mass clearcuttings and dealing with that, this bylaw doesn't really speak to that. It actually does stop someone, as councillor Qualley said, from taking a tree down that might be in the middle of their yard where they want to put a swingset, and they've got, you know, a few trees they want to take down to be able to do that. This doesn't speak to the bylaw that we would be putting in as an interim, doesn't speak to just clearcutting of large areas that are set for development, it speaks to the whole township, and it does stop someone from taking down a couple of trees in their, on their property. And I think we've, I wasn't on council at the time, but there has been previous attempts of doing a township-wide tree bylaw that was very contentious, and had a lot of our residents coming out very upset that we would be telling them what they can and cannot do on their property with their own trees, that they spent a lot of money to buy that property with. So I think this is a much bigger discussion than us just putting in something that was meant for a, an interim, short period of time, for a one small section of our community, to now take it and spread it across 300 square kilometers with, how, I mean, how would we even enforce that? We have four bylaw officers, how are we going to even enforce something of this nature, where we're gonna be going around trying to, you know, catch people cutting trees down? It's just, I think that the discussion, as we said on this council, that we wanted to have the discussion, and we all agree that this is something that is worth looking into and having a fulsome discussion on, has been put forward to the next term, where it can actually be, involve community input, and we can hear from the public, and we can determine whether or not we're on the mark with what we're looking at for a tree bylaw, if that's the route that we go. But just setting aside, you know, and deciding right now, a tree bylaw that spans our whole community and stops people from, you know, removing a couple of trees to be able to put a shed, or, because they've got a swingset that they want to put up, I think has a lot of repercussions that maybe we're not totally thinking of at this moment, and that we need to have a full discussion on, and not just do it on the fly like this, so.
Thank you. Councillor Long?
Well, are we doing it on the fly? I guess staff would be bringing something back, and we should have a presentation before the bylaw is read. I'm looking at Abbotsford here, it's pretty straightforward, been there since 2009. Do we have to reinvent everything? If Abbotsford has a bylaw that's working for them, and they're our neighbours, perhaps we could adopt their principles, and here it says it's $65 to have a tree permit for one tree, and if you wanted to take some more, it's like $97 up to three trees. You can send them a photograph, if your tree is rotting, you're supposed to, you can cut it down and take a picture of it, and send it in, and they kind of go with that. Anyway, I'm not sure how complicated we want to be tonight, but if we're gonna proceed, I guess staff needs to come back with something fairly quick, like I said earlier, and we should have a presentation likely on it, rather than us trying to manufacture one. I'm not sure, really, you know, do we expect why the delegation a couple of weeks ago said we had to have this big standing committee to discuss it, when our neighbours have existing tree bylaws, which likely should be complementary to ours.
Thank you. Councillor Sackens?
I just don't understand why anybody who has an idea and brings it forward on this, to this council, is considered to be making policy on the fly. We had a request from the community through a delegation, we've had numerous letters from the community. We've had, I mean councillor Arneson, since she got elected, has been fighting to protect tree canopy, and to get it documented, and so on, like, it's not like this came out of nowhere. This has been a four-year process, and rather than deal with it using something that we've already got, we're gonna push it off to another council. I think that's just, it's, it's not doing our jobs as council. We've been asked by the community to attend to this, I think what's been presented, not once, not twice, but at least three times, is a good thing to attend to, and we should be getting on with it.
Thank you. Councillor Whitmarsh?
Yeah, I think this, you know, council made a decision three or four weeks ago to, that a tree bylaw was important, that we need to have a good discussion about it, and it was decided to make it part of council priorities. At the next council priority session for the council that's coming in, that was a pretty strong statement, that a tree bylaw is something that we should really consider, and really take our time to put in place. And so I'm not sure why, in three weeks, a decision that seemed so good and so positive, now we have to come up with something quickly, and we have to rush it in, because that's not gonna be satisfactory. By the time an interim tree bylaw comes in, we're probably to the year end of June, and we're talking about having November a proper discussion with all the public involved. It seems odd to me that we create an interim for three or four months, and then let's start working on the permanent one. It just seems odd to me. We had made a great decision three or four weeks ago about how important trees are to our community, how important a tree bylaw is, and I think we should stick with that process. I think it makes perfect sense, and I think each member of council should be pleased that we're treating it serious.
Thank you. All right, any further discussion? Councillor Arneson, you spoke twice already, so I'll wrap up. Yeah, you have, sorry. I'll wrap up, and just thank you for, it's, obviously, it has issues on both sides, and I agree with, I think councillor Whitmarsh summed it up quite well, in that we did look at this, and it needs a more fulsome discussion than an interim bylaw, which, who knows how long it's gonna be interim, so I won't be supporting it either. So at this point, I'll call a question. I forget, what did I number this one? Lost page.
It's M1.
M1? Mic one? Thank you. Okay, and it's defeated. Councillor Whitmarsh, Mayor Fros, councillor Qualley, councillor Sparrow, opposed. And, okay, queue councillor Arneson, you have another notice of motion?
Yes, thank you, your worship. I don't know if it's me or the microphone.
You're on.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, it's about 208 street widening. Therefore be it resolved that council directs staff to include in their upcoming staff report, specific information regarding the parameters for low-cost borrowing through the municipal finance authority to allow phased approach funding to consider the first phase of widening from 72nd Avenue to 84th Avenue with a cost recovery component as part of the development cost charge program for the eligible construction, and from other sources, including general revenue as necessary. I so move.
There's a second, there. Councillor Davis seconds. Discussion on M2. Councillor Arneson, you speak to it?
Yes, just briefly. As was referenced before, and people said, well, isn't this the same thing as you asked for last time? Actually, it is just asking more specifically for something that I talked to staff about, and was directed about the language that could be included. So it's not really different, it's to be included in the original staff report, it's just asking for a bit of a format to consider this as an option.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, I'm gonna call a question on M2. And it carries unanimously? Is there any other business? Councillor Sackens?
Yes, I have a notice of motion for the next meeting. Whereas the Metro Vancouver Board is in an appointed part-time position for local politicians who are already paid by their respective municipalities, whereas the Metro Vancouver Board representatives are well compensated and paid a generous per-meeting stipend plus expenses. Therefore be it resolved that Langley Township Council requests its voting members on the Metro Vancouver Board to vote against a Metro Vancouver Board pension or retirement allowance. That's a notice of motion for April 23rd.
Is there any other business? All right, I'm seeing no other business. Motion terminated. Councillor Davis, second, or, second, or, councillor Qualley, all those in favor? Posed, carried. Hot dog. So we have a public hearing coming up, we'll just give a few minutes for staff to switch that over.